All right, so I think we're live now for the resumption of the public portion. Sorry about that. My mic. For the public portion of the meeting. At 7:02 PM, so I'd like to start by rising to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag, the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, indivisible, just as for all.
Just a moment.
All right.
Just give me one minute to get rid of that noise.
Okay. Anybody want to seal the minutes while Diane's doing?
So moved.
So that if you're so moved, that would be a motion to seal the minutes of the meeting we just came out of until such time as the majority of the board feels the circumstances no longer apply. So that was Charlie's motion, Diane.
Okay.
Bob, did you want a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we actually have to do. Yeah, so Mike's the roll call. So as Diane reminded me, since we have one member of the board via Zoom, we're going to have to roll call vote on this stuff. So I think the first item is the commercial trash hauler's policy update.
Mike, are you alone in that room, wherever you are?
I am.
Okay.
Okay. So we had talked about it like a month ago about making some updates to the policy. Diane went and put them in the existing policy. And I think Charlie, you had one item you wanted to discuss.
Yep.
Article four.
Article four. And in article four, it referenced a 10-foot-by-6-foot-wide trailer along with the truck. I have a problem with that.
And I think you had said to us earlier, your issue is just the volume coming in all at one time that could be in the trailer. So I know Pete's here. Pete, if you don't mind, come into the mic, make you a television star.
Can we go with Pete at the transfer station?
What are your thoughts on these updates?
So again, I'm with Charlie. The trailer has given me pause because.
Can we have Pete speak into the mic?
Same, speaking to the mic.
I'm right here. So it just the amount that would be coming in with two trucks, two trailers, in one working day, along with all the other residents that have to dump. It's getting to be a lot. Well, he does have other options. He does still have Thursday and Saturday, I believe, to bring waste in. That way to bring it over a few days instead of just dumping on us all in one day. I don't know how his schedule works, but that's one of my suggestions.
All right, so your feedback then is for the number four, you wouldn't want to introduce that at all.
Correct.
Okay. And just so for people who don't have it in front of them, limit one tow behind trailer with a maximum length of 10 feet, maximum width of 6 feet, and maximum height no higher than the cab of the truck. So what if?
Trailer.
Yeah. So it was kind of in conversation, what if another resident came in with a trailer that big with trash in it?
Which it does happen. A lot of, some people, they just wait a month to bring their trash in. And when they have a full truck, that's usually what it is, their trailer.
Right. So what do we do at that point?
I mean, we can give it a trial run, 30 days, 60 days, see how it runs, see how it goes. If we get backed up often, if we don't, I say we continue with it. If we get backed up, I'm going to have to say it's not a good idea.
Okay. I see Steve's on the Zoom. Steve, any input on that?
Hang on, Steve, I got unmuted.
He's still muted.
Sorry about that. I hear your concern, Pete, yep, and that's totally valid. I don't want to jam anything up down there. I guess all I could say is, you know, we are very respectful of the time it takes to process the trash once it's down there. And, you know, we would continue to be respectful of that. Also, I do have plans to move, I do in fact have plans to move some of those customers close to half to Thursday at some point in the near future, in the fall probably. That's all I can really say. We did have a, we did have a trailer in the past, you know, and that was a 90-day thing. And then, you know, I was, the business was a bit smaller back then, and I only had one truck back then. So, you know, honestly, I'm not sure how that will work. So, you know, I leave it in the hands of the selectmen.
So what's everybody else, Mike, Bob, think?
So my question to, well, actually, the board and to Peter. This is still, I want to make sure, this is still 100% town trash. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I would say it's on us. If he's delivering trash from the town, what day comes, where it comes from, that's still on the town, is what I would say.
Mm-hmm.
And Steve, if the collection of that happens to be in one day, you can, let's say, go from Tuesdays to Thursdays, which it sounds like you're going to, and alleviate some of the pressure. As a business owner, I would ask you to help the town in that as well.
I'm certainly willing to do whatever I can to help out the town and the residents and the transfer station. So even, so even though I'm asking for a trailer, I still only have the same amount of customers. And it's more like, you know, so instead of, you know, seven runs by two trucks, you know, you then have, you know, three or four runs, and then you're done by, I mean, and I'm just spitballing here, but you're done by.
That makes sense.
You know, 2 o'clock in the afternoon instead of 5 or 6 at night, you know? So just things to think about.
No, I get it. So you're saying, and I want to make sure I understand this, same volume of customers, right? You're not adding customers.
That's.
But you're consolidating into one truck versus multiple, and that one truck is dumping at, say, on a Tuesday at 4 o'clock instead of a bunch of trucks dumping 4, 4:30, 5, 5:30, 6. Is that accurate?
Yeah, I mean, so all except for the part about going down to one truck. My plan is not to buy two trailers for two trucks, is to buy one trailer to be used by one truck on Tuesday, one truck on Thursday.
My bad, sorry.
No, no, I didn't explain that very well, so. But I understand, Mike, also, that's, you know, if you're bringing in a truckload and a trailer, that's a lot of volume in a very short period of time. So, you know, that's something, I don't want to, I don't want to mess anything up. It is my bottom.
No, I get it. I'm just trying to understand what you're doing in volumes. I got it.
Yep.
Bob?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mike. And Bob, any thoughts on this?
I'm having trouble hearing Mr. Seer, but how many runs did you say you would be making with the trailer?
So it's hard to tell, to be honest, but if, the way, the way the size of the trailer corresponds roughly with the size of an 8-foot truck bed in terms of volume. So presumably, you'd be able to get, you know, where we have a total of seven runs, you'd be able to do that in three and a half.
So you'd only be going to the transfer station three times versus seven?
Yeah, well, I mean, three and a half is really four, but yeah. I mean, I, you know, it's, I don't have an exact, I mean, so I won't do it, but, you know, I, this is one of my best guesses.
No, yeah, roughly. I'm just saying it. I'm not for perfection, just a guesstimation.
So if I could propose something here, I know in the past, because Pete makes a good suggestion there, let's try it, see what happens, which there's nothing wrong with that. I think in the past, what we've done is, we said we're going to try this for a while and then overcome by events, whatever. We don't go back and review it. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to make a motion to accept these changes in the transfer station commercial trash haulers policy with the caveat that if the transfer station manager sees an issue with any of the new requirements, he brings them to our attention as soon as possible so that we can then make any changes at that point.
So it's really not changes, there were additions?
Additions. If you could use that word, Diane, that would be excellent.
Okay.
So that's my motion, if anybody wants to.
I'll second it.
So Bob has seconded my motion. Any discussion?
No, I think, now that I have a better understanding of what he's going to be doing, I think it might actually work.
Okay, great. So I'm going to have to do this as a roll call vote. So Mike, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Charlie?
No.
And I'm an aye, so that passes. All right, thank you, Steve. Thank you, Pete.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks. And I think we're moving on down here to the building department, picking up a discussion from a previous meeting about a vehicle for use by the building inspector, which I believe the fire chief has dropped it off. The fire chief is all set. He no longer needs the vehicle, right?
Right. Vehicle's decommissioned, it's out in the parking lot, there are no plates on it.
Yep.
Door emblems are taken off of it.
So it's, if people in town would like to see it, it's in the back parking lot, so please take a drive-by and check it out. So the, a couple of changes need to be made to it, as you just said, you know, stickers and that stuff. What's your estimate as to how much that would cost us?
Well, it's going to be registered, which doesn't cost the town anything. Insurance doesn't cost the town because it's a blanket insurance. I got a quote from Kelly Graphics for $275 to de-letter it and put the new lettering on.
Strange question, when you put gas in it, how, would that work the same way, any of the cruisers?
Yeah, same as the rest.
Same way, yeah. So it's not like we need to issue you a card or anything?
No, he just, not with Esther Brooks, I'll go without. I mean, he's not going to use a lot of gas.
Hopefully not. All right, any questions from the board on this?
Well, Bob had made a comment about being able to park it at his house.
And I'm in favor of that.
Okay. You're in favor?
I'd be in favor, because he brought up a good point during the wintertime, snow removal. He would end up having to go down there and.
Oh, no, no, not me. Whoever says it's going to be parked at 8 Merrimack Road is going to go clean it and move it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So if it wasn't there, it wouldn't have to be moved. So, and then he wouldn't end up having to jockey around his vehicles. He could drive home from his first job and then just jump in the other one and do the job right there. So it would end up, I believe, helping save on gas and whatever all around.
Mike, any thoughts? Were you going to say something, Bob?
I was going to ask if there was something else Bob wanted to mention.
Well, I know it's been mentioned that they want to let the maintenance guy also use the cruiser. I'm totally against it if that's going to happen. It's going to be such a headache, I wouldn't be interested in the car anymore.
That's the first I've heard of that.
Oh, it was just a suggestion. I just want to clear it up before I go any further.
Mike, anything you want to add?
Yeah, so I'm in favor of keeping it at 8 Merrimack. If you have to clean the car that you need to use it, I'm fine with that. So.
I didn't hear what he said.
So.
I think he's, I think he said he's in favor of keeping it at 8 Merrimack Road. Is that what you said, Mike?
Right.
I am.
But he said a reason after that, I didn't hear the reason.
Okay.
Well, if the reason is cleaning the car, you'd have to clean the car in your own house. So I'm okay as long as snow removal is done so that he can get into his car. I mean, we have to give him courtesy. He needs to get into his car. So I'd be okay if it's at 8 Merrimack.
Well, my thought is, is every department head that has a vehicle keeps the vehicle with them. Nobody's going to be driving the vehicle but myself. And yes, they're going to clean up around the car for me to be able to use it, but at 1 o'clock in the morning, when Mike Ferrero, the road agent, calls me up, says, you've got to come move the car so I can plow, I'm going to tell him, call the board of selectmen because I'm not going to get up and go to 8 Merrimack Road to clean off a car and move it.
I'm okay. I'll talk to Mike about that.
So there's two department heads who have cars, right?
Right.
Police chief and fire chief?
Right.
And they deal with 911 calls? So just to be clear, not every department head has a car type thing?
That's fine.
Yeah. All right, so does anybody want to make any motions?
Matt, they're parked in buildings still now, so they're not in the way.
Yeah.
His car would be in the way.
If we could find a spot in the building for the winter, I think that's a good idea.
There's no room.
Well, we could, we could ask somebody.
They've got all the hammers outside now because there's no room.
Yeah.
I don't know what they're going to do this winter.
Parking outside, Joe.
I mean, I'm just curious, is there a reason why you don't want it in my house?
I don't know, I just, well, first of all, let's make a motion, whether we're doing it or not, and then we can talk about the next.
I'll make the motion that we allow the building department code enforcement to have the Ford and to have the Ford be able to take the Ford home.
Can we do two separate motions?
It's in the same motion.
Can we do two separate ones?
We can if we want.
Okay. So why don't you do the first motion, which is to actually assign the vehicle? Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we assign the Ford that the fire department has given up to the building department, Bob Donovan, Jr.
Yep.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All right. Roll call vote, Mike?
Aye.
That was an aye, I think.
Aye.
Charlie's an aye. I'm an aye. So we have, so we have the car assigned now. So I think, I think my issue is, this is new territory, let's see how it works. I think that's my issue. We do have two vehicles that go home with people, but they're emergent, they're department heads, emergency services department heads. That's just my thing. It's nothing more than that. It's, I mean, is it going to, if three people voted different than me tonight, it wouldn't bother me, you know? But I just think, let's try this first.
It's a $500 car. It's not, it's not.
Yeah, I know, it's not a Ferrari or anything, yeah, so.
But I will make a motion to we allow the building department, Bob Donovan, the chief building department, to take the car to his residence from there.
Anybody want a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Bob, any discussion? All right, roll call vote, Mike?
Nay.
Bob?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm a nay, so it's a tie. So you have the car, so we'll see how it goes.
All right.
Now, it is, it is worth talking about because we gave a stipend last time, right, when we thought we wouldn't have the car? So do we, anybody want to make a motion to rescind the previous vote on the stipend since we have the car in place now?
Yeah, I'll make a.
I'll make a motion.
We need an effective date too, by the way, so.
Yep. So I'll make a motion to rescind the stipend. Before I do that, I would need to know when Bob will be utilizing that vehicle for work.
Yeah, realistically, when do you think it'll be up and running?
Saturday.
This Saturday?
He's going to, he's going to do the lettering on Thursday, so we'll get it back Thursday night.
Okay. So Diane, what's the next pay period?
Yeah. We just entered one, right? So 13th, August 13th.
So we could do it effective?
You can do it effective August 7th, it doesn't matter.
Right, but we wouldn't want, we want to make sure he still gets paid for using his own vehicle until the other ones.
Right.
Well, that's what she's saying, the 7th.
Yeah. What do you think, Mike, in your motion?
In my motion, I would say August 7th, if I hear correctly from Diane.
Okay.
Because he can use the vehicle even though the lettering is, am I correct? He can use it without lettering?
No, it sounds like the lettering will be done soon.
Yeah, the lettering's going to be done Thursday.
Yeah.
In two days.
So August 7th.
Yeah.
And you still have to.
Second.
You still have to register it and everything, so.
Right, I already talked to Mary Jo about that. One of the, one of the board of selectmen will have to sign for it because it's a town car, it doesn't belong to the building department.
Mm-hmm.
But she has the title and everything, so it'll be ready to go.
Can that be done 7th, or do I need to stretch it?
Yeah, we'll do another motion on that. But, so you seconded that, right? So any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Charlie?
No. I just soon pay, I just soon give him the $100 if he's going to have to come down here and clean that thing off at 2 o'clock in the morning.
All right.
That won't happen, Charlie, trust me.
Oh, I know it won't happen, but that's why I voted no, though.
Okay.
Because it's foolish.
So I'm an aye. So that one passes three to one.
The only thing on that before, I wish you would let me talk about it before.
Okay, sorry.
Because we know the condition of the vehicle.
Yeah.
So it is going to have to go in for maintenance at times.
Yeah.
Now, are you cutting off my mileage if I have to use my truck because the car's in the garage, basically? Or do I just put in for regular mileage?
Can we see how it works first?
That's, I just want to clear it all up at once, so we don't have to do it again.
Hopefully, hopefully it's not going to be.
Right, hopefully it's fine.
In for maintenance quite a bit, but let's see how it goes.
That's fine.
But you, I mean, you make a legitimate point. If it doesn't work out, maybe we don't want to do it. If it's in for maintenance too much, it would make more sense just to do the stipend. But to me, it's one or the other, you know what I mean?
Well, you could do, just pay him mileage. You don't have to pay him a stipend. So let's say the car's in the shop for two days, you just pay the mileage that he uses his truck for.
Yeah, I think.
Just a regular mileage thing and not a stipend.
Right, but I think it's across that bridge when we come to it, but that's probably what we would do, you know? All right, so that one passed, three to one, right?
Correct.
So now we need a motion. Charlie, you seem like the perfect person to make the motion, to have, why don't we say the board chair signed for the purpose of registration?
Yep, I'll make a motion that the chairman of the board signs for the registration of the vehicle.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call, Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye. So I think that covers it, right?
Yeah, should cover it.
Perfect. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
And so Trish, I think you wanted to do E before D, right? Is that the, so it looks like we have an ARPA waiver for sealed bid requirements proposal that Trish is going to talk to us about.
So I guess I'll read my request first on the waiver before we address requisitions and my update, ARPA update. So what I wrote, for those in TV land, to the board of selectmen, last time we spoke about for the grant, for grant purposes, the ARPA grant specifically, which is from now until the end of 2024 for us to target where we're going to spend our money, and we have till 2026 to spend the money. What we'd like to do, what the ARPA committee would like to do is change, instead of amending the purchase policy, the ARPA committee is requesting of the board of selectmen to make a motion to waive the sealed bid policy for ARPA purchases and/or services through the entirety of the program. Requisitions for purposes, for purchases and/or services from 5,000 to 20,000 shall be provided for board of selectmen approval before any action is taken by the ARPA committee. Any purchases and/or services over 20,000 require a sealed bid following our regular policy excluding state bid items and will follow current guidelines in our purchase policy on item number five in our purchase policy. I do have it with me if you don't have it. And since ARPA funds have a beginning and an end date, it's really not necessary to change a policy. And because this actually helps the taxpayers, because it's not something that's going to go into a Warren article, which is probably going to get denied, the grant is like a gift. So we would like you to consider that change in our policy. And I did, the bookkeeper and I worked on this, so we came up with this language. She came up with it more than I did, so she's aware of it.
So any.
So I make a motion that we move.
Were you going to say something?
I was going to say, and it's only for the ARPA.
That's right.
Right. So it's committee-based stuff, right? We still have that, that gate of the.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
You were going to make a motion, Bob?
Yeah, I was.
Any?
Well, we could have discussed it after we did that, too.
I know, we could.
But anyways.
I heard Charlie before you.
So I'm going to move that we waive the sealed bid policy for ARPA purchases and/or services through the entirely, entirety of the program. Requisitions for the purchase and/or services from 5,000 to 20,000 shall be provided to the board of selectmen.
Board of.
Approval before any action is taken by the ARPA committee. Any purchases and/or services over $20,000 require a sealed bid excluding state bid items and will follow the town purchase policy.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Any discussion?
I got one thing I'd like to say. Jack Kozak and I have been working on a generator for the transfer station, and that may come over the 20.
Oh, really? Okay.
And we've gotten two bids, he has the bids, and we've been waiting for a third. And I think it was in the vicinity of 30,000, right around there. But this generator would run the whole transfer station like it was having regular electricity.
Oh, good.
So that one's going to run a little more.
But, you know, we can prioritize that, right?
I mean, maybe case by case. The reason we wanted to do this, or, and we talked about it, we battled it around, we talked to other towns, things are going up.
Yeah.
As an example, although I just got notified today, finally, our striker stretcher is coming in. But the amount of time that it took for us to deal with that, it went up $6,000. So stuff like a generator, and heaven help us where it's coming from, if it's coming from China, you might not get it for three years.
The, it's one of those things, people should understand, too, this is the selectmen's purchase policy, which is, you know, before my time maybe, that was implemented. It's got nothing to do with a statutory requirement or anything.
That's true.
So we're, we're essentially waiving our own policy, and I think it's keeping with the intent of the policy by doing it the way we're doing it, but.
I agree.
All right, so I'm going to call for a vote, if that's cool. So Mike, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye. So that's E, right?
That's E.
So now we're back to D.
Okay, so there was a reason that we needed to reverse the order, and I know you have some requisitions, but before I get to those, part of your manifest will be stipends for the Police Department and the Highway Department. The Harper Committee approved and is recommending to you as the Selectmen stipends using the state guidelines that we used in 2020. The only difference in these guidelines is that in 2020, the state said, any first responder, police, fire, EMS, whether or not they ever went on a call, which we really had a problem with, they got a stipend. We had a real problem with that, but because the state said, here's the guidelines, we had to deal with that. The newest stipend that came out, the U.S. Treasury said, the stipends are for first responders, police, fire, EMS, highway, people that have direct contact, like the election workers, like the lifeguards, but they have to have contact with a person. It's not, they didn't even have to walk in the door, they have to walk in the door. So the U.S. Treasury said, if they went on calls, if they were duty officers, whatever it might be, lifeguards, election workers, they were entitled to a stipend. And the stipend, we followed the guidelines, they gave us money, the money guidelines. So we have eight full-time police and one full-time highway getting $2,485.71, and then seven part-time police getting $1,242.86. The bookkeeper has all the names, it's not confidential, if you need me to read them, I can read them, but I think I did send you the lists. The Fire Department stipends, we're working on that, that's gonna be presented at the next meeting, at our next ARPA meeting, and then we'll present it to you. We had to look at their categories, whether full-time, part-time, on-call, voluntary, EMS, firefighter one, firefighter two, so we had to kind of break it down into categories. It was a little more complicated than the police and the highway, so we'll give you that at the next meeting. Also, for any of the first responders that are receiving a stipend, this was people that went on a call between January 1st and June 30th of this year. If they weren't hired till, say, July 1st of this year, then they're not entitled to a stipend until December, just so that you know. So anyone that's listening that might have recently been hired, we didn't forget you. Also, for the ARPA Committee, technology, our computers and camera and security, we're meeting with a camera and security company, I think Diane is coming on Monday, the 8th, at the fire station at 1:00, and then at 2:00, we're meeting a life safety public relations company to talk about websites, public relations, media, and we don't want people, if anyone's listening in TV land, we don't want necessarily money quotes, we want a range, because this is probably gonna be expensive, we are gonna have to go out for a sealed bid, so we don't want to ruin our chances of somebody coming in, talking to us, and giving us a specific amount of money, and then all of a sudden, we have a problem with our bid. We want it to be really general, see what they can offer us. We have a second camera security company that we'll be speaking with, possibly on Wednesday, I'm waiting for confirmation on that. The printer for the planning board in ZBA, we have one more quote coming in, so at your next meeting, we'll present that for you. The filters for town hall in the library, we discussed it. At your last Board of Selectmen meeting, we were a little bit concerned because there was talk about new buildings and, I don't know, ripping down buildings, and we thought, well, we better just get portable filters, so that if we change buildings or officers get moved around, we can move the filters with us. So we'll have that information at your next meeting. The HVAC systems for the police, if this building is gonna change, like we talked about, or you talked about at your last meeting, we're gonna put that on hold. Also, the solar company said, if that building is gonna change, we probably shouldn't get quotes for putting solar panels on it. So the solar panels may just end up on the Fire Department, which I'm told can take the weight load of solar panels. The Police Department may not be able to take that weight load. Also, the Police Department needs an updated digital antenna, we're gonna discuss this at our next ARPA meeting. The Recreation Department has given ARPA a list of potential needs for the town beach in Graney Park. This is gonna be an ongoing list as we continue to upgrade these locations. Anyone with suggestions, we just met last night, so this is new, but definitely give us a call, either Town Hall or tmacarthy@newtonnh.net if you wanna make suggestions or come to our meetings, the public is welcome. Lifeguards, I mentioned, are entitled to a stipend. Actually, our, our guy in charge, our supervisor of the beach and the lifeguards is on Zoom, so he maybe can speak to that, not to that, but about the boat situation that we're gonna talk about. We also approved, ARPA Committee approved, a printer for the EOC. We've never had one. We always use the Fire Department, and Diane had Armin come and set up, so I'm all set up, wireless. It's, it's better than nothing, it's not great, but then again, we didn't spend a whole lot of money either. The requisitions that I have put in front of you, the first one is for the Fire Department boat. So I was gonna just read, so North Atlantic Inflatables out of 29 Bath Road, Brunswick, Maine, they're writing this letter to document that we, Northern, North Atlantic Inflatables, are the source in the U.S. for ALA 420H, fireboat package that we have quoted for you. There's similar boats offered for sale in Asia and Europe, but we are the only ones selling them in the U.S. If you have any questions, please not hesitate to call, and his name is Rob. And the quote, that, we got three quotes, and ARPA recommends the one by Netcom Wireless Facilities for $17,598.00. Oh, no, that's the repeater, wait a minute. Wait, the boat is, sorry.
$19,298.
Is $19,298. That's with a 30 horsepower, not the 40 horsepower, but it does have the stainless steel arch to the back of the boat, which we felt was important, and it includes the trailer. We, and, and Peter, if he's on, can talk to this, gee, I saw him a minute ago. Water rescues are important, our fish and wildlife are the ones that respond to country pond. If they're already tied up somewhere else, we've gotta hope that we can get somebody else to respond. I did, we, we talked about this in the committee, it would be on a trailer, so it's gonna be mobile. The ARPA Committee recommends that anyone who is gonna be driving this boat or operating it is gonna be certified with boat safety. The Fire Chief did say, yes, that would happen, and the deputy also said they would make sure. We recommend that their certificates be given to the Fire Chief, and I guess Diane, until we get a town administrator, so that we know everyone that's operating it is certified. Peter, are you on by any chance? He was.
He was, yeah.
I saw him.
Just a question, on your boat?
Yep.
I have the quote as being $18,848.
No, if you added all the, all the items that they said, $11,600 for the 13-foot eight, $54.73 for the 30 horsepower, $11.75 for the trailer, to rig the boat was $550, and then the arch steel was another 500, it came to $19,298.
Then we don't have the right quote for you provided, the North Atlantic Inflatables?
Yep.
Okay, it's written in pen here, and the one I have is $18,848.
I got a quote here, Diane, for $19,298.
The one I got emailed to me says $18,848. Do you wanna look at this?
I know, this is.
Yeah, I've got the figures, in the requisition, I put $19,298.
Yeah, in the, in the requisition, that's in the shared folder, is $19,298, but you're looking for a quote to match it, is that what?
Yep.
So, I mean, we could probably just get it. I mean, if the board's okay with making sure we get it after this, we probably can just move forward.
And just telling you that the quote.
Yeah, and it's what I sent you, because I'm looking at what I sent you.
Just send me the new quote, that's all.
Yeah, I'll get, make you a copy and give it to you.
Yeah, no, yeah, just, yeah, whatever.
It was the three pages that I, I gave you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which I was written on, too.
Yeah. Oh, you know what? Yes, I can see what you're looking at, that was changed to the, yeah, for 18, 848 or something.
$8,848.
And, yeah, and we had to re, we had to add on that shaft, so maybe that was the difference.
Okay.
Okay, sorry about that. She's right, I'm right, we're both right.
Get shafted.
That must be where that comes from.
Yes.
So, so the requisition is still correct?
Yes, it is.
You're just gonna get us enough?
I'll have to fix that quote.
Yeah.
But she's got.
All right, so I'll go by the requisition then.
Okay.
All right.
So I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we accept the requisition number 2022-009, not to exceed $19,298 for the boat.
Second.
Money to come from ARPA funds, excuse me.
Yes, please, yeah.
Yes.
All right, any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Aye.
Charlie's an aye, Matt's an aye.
Okay.
Do we have to name the boat? Is that?
We'll do whatever Diane wants us to do.
Don't you always name a boat?
Or we need to actually put a name on it.
Yeah, we should, right?
We'll put, we'll call it the Miss Tricia.
Uh-oh, that was my ambulance. Okay, and the other requisition that I've given you is for the repeater. We did get three quotes on this. The Kenwood Atlas for $17,598. The ARPA Committee recommends this quote from Netcom Wireless Facilities. Our repeater is very old, it's not clear. Charlie's been in the trucks, I've been in the trucks, it's horrific. You cannot hear each other. This will clear up the, the static, or whatever you wanna call it. In addition, this repeater can, it's analog, but it can go to digital, so if we ever went to a complete digital platform, it can be reprogrammed, I guess is the word I'm gonna use, so it will fit, fit our needs. Unfortunately, the Police Department still needs an antenna. They're completely digital, whereas the Fire Department is not, so at our next meeting, we'll talk about that. So this requisition is just for this Kenwood Atlas. I'll come back to you with something with an antenna for the PD.
So I'll move to sign the ARPA requisition 2022-009, in the amount of $17,598 for a radio repeater and accessories from Netcom Wireless Facilities, per quote number 71822, funds to come from the ARPA fund.
And it's 008. It's, the requisition's 008, not 009. I did 009.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, you're cool.
They're top.
That's my, my typing, so it is a.
Yeah, he's reading off the proposed motions.
And I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Charlie.
My bad.
Any, we're testing Diane tonight, that's. All right, Mike, how do you vote?
So are we in discussion?
Oh, sorry, discussion, go ahead.
Thank you, Matt. So Trish, is there any way that there's gonna be any other expenses if we go this way with the Police Department?
So the Police Department, and I spoke to Chief Jewett yesterday and today, the Police Department radios are completely digital. They have a town radio frequency, so they can turn to the analog frequency to speak to the fire or even the highway during snowstorms or whatever, but this is not gonna solve the problem for the Police Department. They have, their antenna, he said, is extremely old, and they just need an antenna. It's already on the, on, I think it's still on the firehouse, so they just need a new antenna for their digital radios. So will the police be able to use this? Yes, they can go to analog to talk to our local, our local channel, but for emergency calls, they've gotta have their digital antenna.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, Mike, how do you vote?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye, so that one passes.
Okay. I think the last thing that I have is just a quick EOC update, just so that, you know, obviously, we've had a horrendous heat wave, I don't think it's over yet. The EOC did give the option to residents for opening up the cooling center. I actually went to houses to check on people that I thought may need assistance. Everybody was comfortable, there was no problem. Both the Police Department and the Fire Department were willing to assist if we had to open up the fire station. COVID has not gone away. Unfortunately, we have eight new cases in the last 14 days in Newton. Forty-four percent of our residents are fully vaccinated, that's only up six tenths of a percent since I last reported to you. And obviously, no school cases, but the chatter on what, on the web calls that we're listening to, is everyone's nervous about what's gonna happen when school opens. Clearly, that's happening everywhere. And that's my report.
All right.
Trish?
Yes?
So weather's very keen in the work I do. Just be prepared over the next seven to 10 days, that you're gonna see some pretty high temperatures.
That's right.
Yeah, so be very careful.
Yeah, and thanks. And for those of you that are listening, you know, you just have to make a call. You can call the fire station at 382-8811. If I am not at the EOC, they'll get ahold of me, and will open up the cooling center, and we can come and get you if necessary. Thank you, Mike.
Cool. We'll, we'll schedule some Board of Selectmen's meetings for the seven to 10 days, because it gets pretty cool in here when we get that.
Yeah, there you go.
So everybody can come to the meetings and cool off. All right, so thank you, Trish, that's it for your area, so nice segue. Actually, we're not going to that one yet. Actually, we are. So it's F, review quote for replacement air handler at police station?
So the Chief Jewett and I have been working on this. It's very warm on the second floor, they really can't use it. So we had replaced the AC condenser, and that fixed it for a while, and then what we found out is that the refrigerant is leaking, and now we did a pressure test, and it's leaking out of the air handler. So now the air handler needs to be replaced.
Okay, so that will get the, get the air flowing. So the.
So I did get, yeah, I did get a quote today, it came in today, and it was like 58.
58 and change, yeah.
Yeah, 58, $5,850.
So I'm thinking if we approve that, we might wanna take it out of the 8 Merrimack Road account?
Kim and I talked about it, we were thinking it would probably come out of the general, town building general fund, general town building capital reserve fund.
Yeah.
That's what we were recommending.
Okay, anybody wanna make a motion?
So I'll make a motion, we move to accept quote from Balenzi Heating and Cooling to replace the AC air handler at the police station in the amount of $5,850, funds to come from the town building capital reserve fund.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye, so. Thank you for that one, moving down my list here. Where'd I go? So we're now on G, review sealed bid advertisement. So this is, I recommend, this is not reviewing sealed bids, this is a draft announcement from Town Council on how to solicit sealed bids for the property at Tax Map 12-1-1 Thornel Road. Before I, before I read this, did anybody on the board have any suggestions, edits, whatever, from this draft?
No, I read it, and it basically covers everything right to the T, so that we can't be held liable for any misunderstandings or anything like that. And the town makes out, it's a, it's a win-win situation by putting the sealed bid out that way. And Diane had noted that it might cost like $500 or so to do it, however, I will remind the board and anybody and everybody that's listening out there in TV land, as Matt likes to say, that the town can and will receive any monies that the town has to pay out in accordance with the sale of the property before we hand over the excess monies to the old town property owner. So at that point.
There is one thing, number seven, under conditional, conditions of sale, you have to put a, and maybe Trish can help us. You have to put a, and maybe Trish can help us with this. Can you switch your hat to conservation, please?
Okay, sure.
Okay, thanks. So we talked about not clear cutting that property, but he also recommends putting in a vegetation removal is limited to a certain percentage of the premises. So would you...
So what's his question that he wants to do?
So he's, I'll read it. It says, "The quitclaim deed to the property shall contain a covenant that the land may not be clear cut and that, and that vegetation removal is limited to some percentage of the premises, which is of the land."
Right.
So that's that little parcel that's...
Just that 4.7 acre parcel.
Correct.
Which is really less than that, because he gave the town some of that. I mean, conservation, some of that.
Well, no.
Right.
No.
Not yet.
Oh, not yet.
That has not happened.
Okay.
This is just strictly the 4.7.
Okay.
So what has conservation had on? What would you suggest would be the, the limit that they can remove of vegetation?
That's when you have to have like a forester come in and look to see what we've got.
But Diane is, he's, he's making a, he's given us notice of this for the quitclaim deed, right? Not for the posting, correct?
The posting is, well, this is, this would be the bid, the bid conditions that somebody would have to follow.
Right, right.
So the advertisement is what I kind of wrote up. I just took like bits of what he said.
Yeah, right, right.
But I can't put that out there until you have these conditions set.
Right. So, so basically, I, I don't think you have to answer tonight, but if we're negotiating with somebody, it could be anybody, almost anybody, right? When we issue them a quitclaim deed, we're going to want to be very descriptive in the quitclaim deed.
So I can work on that. I can work on that then.
Is that fair to say? Is that, did I...
I don't know what a quitclaim deed is.
So a quitclaim deed, basically, it's...
What I have, I give to you.
Yeah, exactly. It's the most basic deed in, what, what you can, you can say things in it, like I give you half of, and you describe the plot, right? So we would describe whatever we're quitclaiming on the deed. So it'll be prepared by a lawyer, but he needs to have that detail to put into it. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I'll see if I can get that answer for you.
I also have a comment on this, to be honest with you. I think the minimum bid should be, no, 1,000, 1,500. I think the minimum bid should be, is what was owed on taxes.
Yep, it's up to you what you guys want to change.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's what I'd like to.
That's fine.
We should at least get our tax money out of it.
Right, that was what, $1,500?
Yeah.
More than that.
No, it wasn't. I don't think it was. I don't even know if it made it 1,500.
We can put whatever number we want on it.
Yeah.
So do you, do you have a...
I don't have a number, because I, I thought it was more money than that, to be honest with you.
No, it wasn't more money.
Well, we could do a ballpark, you know, whatever you're comfortable with.
Well, bare minimum, you know, 5,000. I mean, that's what they do in all foreclosures. Minimum bid, five grand.
Okay, so I was going to read the request for sealed bids, so I'm going to read the abbreviated one. Does that make sense? Just so people know what we're talking about?
Sure.
Makes sense? Okay, so the Newton Board of Selectmen is seeking sealed bids on a parcel of town-owned land referenced as Tax Map 12, Block 1, Lot 1. The premises, described as the premises. The premises are landlocked, and the conveyance of the premises would not come with any deeded easement access or rights of way to the premises. Premises. Description of the premises is as followed. Approximately 4.7 acres. Currently located in the residential A zoning district. Landlocked parcel. Bid submittal. Complete bidding requirements are available on the town's website and at the Selectmen's Office during business hours. All bids must be submitted in sealed envelopes and marked Tax Map 12, Block 1, Lot 1 to the Selectmen's Office, Two Town Hall Road, Newton, New Hampshire, 03858. No later than 5:00 PM on August 31st, 2022. Thereafter, the bids will be publicly opened. Bidders must use the bid form available on the town's website and Selectmen's Office. Bids received after the deadline will not be accepted Board of, from the Board of Selectmen. So we would post this out, website, and I think the newspaper, right? And then they could get further information, which is, I think, what Charlie has in front of them. So does anybody want to make a motion to proceed with this? Is there any discussion?
Are we just going on the five grand? Are we going on the whole thing, Matt?
I would...
Yeah, that's what I'm confused about. To me, I don't care if it's five grand, 10 grand, 20 grand. Town can't collect anything more than the taxes, so what are we doing?
Yeah, I mean, we can set the number.
We can go more than taxes, but you end up supposedly giving it back to the individual. But I keep, other people keep telling me, other towns, they sell property, they keep all the money.
Yeah.
And I've heard it more than once. I'm not, I'm not an attorney.
We don't, that's why we went to Town Council. We don't have any, any offers yet, so we can certainly talk about it then. I, I don't have a problem with starting the, the floor at 5,000. Is that what people want to do?
Yeah.
Yep, I'm for that.
So you, you want to propose to use the short bid and not the, the one from Town Council?
Well, I'm just not going to read the, the full specs. I think the advertisement should be what I just read, because that's what people are going to look at. Then they're going to get the bid form, right, when they click on here, so.
So then they'll get the one from the attorneys.
Is that, is that what your thought was?
That was my thought. Otherwise, it's going to cost you an arm and a leg to have that all printed out.
So it's... So if I was, if I was doing the motion, and, did you make a proposed motion, Diane? You're usually ahead of us with that.
Um, I did, but I think it's no good anymore.
There's a move to approve the sale of a town-owned parcel known as Tax Map 12-1-1 via sealed bid and to advertise the sale in the local newspaper and the town's website.
So a second for discussion. Could you add...
Minimum bid.
Right, would the only change, the minimum bid is now $5,000?
Yes.
And I'll second it.
Okay, and Charlie?
So the taxes owed for that property is under $1,500. In 2013, it was $461.86.
But...
2014, $474.12. 2015, $476.42.
But that doesn't include the costs it's cost us, attorneys, what we...
Interest.
Right, but that's, that's 1,500. No, that's including everything. At that point, you own the land, or you, yeah, you own the land after 2015. So there's no more taxes you can collect on it, because you'd be paying yourself.
Right.
Right, but we...
You get interest, right.
We can pick whatever number we want.
I just think 5,000, you're going to end up giving it to that person.
Yeah, so, but the answer to the question is that's, that's the tax figures. If you make a point, we have invested other money in there, which we know we can get some of that back without figuring that out all tonight. I think 5,000's a good place to start, just...
Okay, so just change it to 5,000?
Yes, please.
I think we had a motion and a second, right?
Okay.
So, Mike, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Bob?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Matt's an aye. So there we go. So that, we'll hear more about that in September, right? So. So we have a meeting on September 2nd, so we would have something to look at then, I would assume, right?
That would be, that's what I would assume, yes.
You know what they say about assuming, but... Okay, H is review electricity aggregate options. So revisiting this item.
So I'm going to make a motion that we authorize the chairman to sign this 36-month electricity aggregation agreement with Constellation when available.
Okay, anybody want to second that one?
I'll second that for discussion.
Okay. Go ahead.
So with my background, that there's a lot of turbulence going on right at that, in that marketplace. I think, I, I think that we, we can layer some hedges in. I know, I'm talking, so we can buy years in time, but I think we need to have a conversation with Constellation Energy where I want to reiterate this, as I did in the beginning, especially past the year 2023, where the market seems to be showing some weakness, that we can dollar-cost average down. I know, I'm using some terms that aren't in my industry, but where we can save the town money on, on electricity. So, so I'm okay with signing it upfront, as long as they stick to that agreement that when the market, especially in the 2023, comes down, if it, if, and it's looking that way, at the end of '23, into '24, that we can have conversations about lowering our price. And there's ways to do it, and I don't want to get technical, but want to be able to have that option, make sure it's on the table.
All right. I believe the discussion we had in the last meeting with the representatives was that, that is still on the table, right? Did I hear that correctly?
That's what I thought.
Yeah, so...
It is, but now I want to be very clear with the board as we sign these agreements, that suppliers will say, yes, it is, because that's today's market, right? Today, we are admettable. What they're not telling you is subject to change. So I just want to make sure that, once again, we have that conversation, because I am seeing in the forward curve, in the forward markets, there's some weaknesses that we're thinking about, some other things that are coming into play. And I think after 2023, or into, late into '23, that we may see some opportunities that we may want to have conversations. So I just want to make sure we have that last conversation to call them on the carpet, make sure we're, we're fine.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So we're supposed to sign this by, what's this, August, September, he said, right?
August 9th is the date that you have to sign the contract. It can't be August 8th, it can't be August 10th, it has to be August 9th.
August 9th. So Mike, do you think you might want to reach out to this guy and ask him about getting that in writing? Seeing as you know specifically what we need?
Yeah, I have no problem. I just want to make sure the board's okay with it. It's a, I want to make sure that we can make a, a decision and outside of the aggregate to say, hey, we want, it's called, it's called a blend and extend. And we want to make sure that we have options that we can play when the market falls, if it does. And guys, there's a lot of political stuff out there nationally and internationally that are coming into play, and it may not happen. But if it does, I want to make sure we can pull a trigger.
Mike, I got a question for you. The Opera, the Opera Committee is looking into solar panels.
Yes.
How would this affect it?
It won't.
So if we got solar panels and we produce ex amount of electricity, because we can turn around, let's say we put enough solar panels on, on the fire station and the police station, and we can cover the town hall, the library, with the extra power that we make, we can turn around and take care of them bills at the same time, and the transfer station. That's, that's what we're being told.
That's what he said when he was here. He said, as long as we're in the agreement, and, because we brought up that fact to him about the solar panels, and he said that does not have any effect, as long as the town of Newton is involved in the pact and doesn't just totally withdraw from the pact, that it has, it doesn't affect our money or whatever.
So, conceptually, Bob, you're correct. I want to be very careful what I say. There's some technical terms here. So as long as the fire department or any other department that we talked about doesn't cancel a meter, and this is where it comes down to, shuts it off, cancels it, you're fine. You can go down to zero usage, is what Constellation will tell you, and you're fine. It's when you disconnect, discontinue, that there's a problem, and they will charge. It's called the liquidation fee. You can go solar as far as, they don't care. Go solar as much as you want. If the solar company is telling you on the fire department, it's going to fight, it's going to cover the fire department, the police department, and multiple other things in the town, in my mind, I'm just going to let you know, Charlie, that there's a red flag. I would have to really look at the usage, the load factors. There's a whole bunch of things I'd have to look at to tell you what they're telling you is correct. So I'll put that to the side and talk about that if we need to digest that. But yes, when solar goes on with Constellation Energy, they have a bandwidth clause that says you can go down to zero as long as you do not discontinue that meter, which is called an ACCOM. And you can go 100% above it in usage, so you're covered. But you have to be very careful of what you do and how you do it and what you say.
So is it, do we want to do a motion in such a way? Because we have to sign it on the 9th, so we're not going to have a meeting that we know of before the 9th. Do we want to do a motion in such a way that allows Mike the opportunity to have that conversation? And if Mike comes back to us and says, you know, everything sounds good, then I, as the chair, for example, could sign it on the 9th.
I don't have a problem with that.
Does that sound all right?
Yep, well, I was going to adjust my motion to that effect.
Sounds good.
So essentially, the motion that was put forth, with the exception that Mike placed a phone call and he contacted chairman.
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. All right, no further discussion. Let's go with Mike, how do you vote?
I'm going to ask one thing.
Okay.
Going to, I'm going to amend that a little bit. I don't care if it's a board member or Diane, but somebody join me in the call so somebody else hears what I hear, so that they can say, yes, they heard that.
Oh, you want a second person there when you make the call?
Yeah.
Yep.
Second set of ears.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll go along with that, and I'll be the second person.
Okay.
Sound good?
Yep, you just let me know, Mike.
I will, I will.
All right. So, so I don't think you really need to put that in your motion. Your motion is still probably good, as it sounds. So, all right, so Mike, how do you vote?
Aye.
Uh, Bob?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, and you'll, you guys will let us know via phone or email if there's any red flags, but we'll plan on that. All right, moving on down the road here.
So the board's accepting me to be the second, be the second person?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We didn't put it in the motion, but that's, that's fine.
I know, we didn't put it in the motion, but...
Yeah, yeah. So aye is insurance payment for the Marshall House repairs. So this is the response from Primax.
So I, I know we're entitled to at least... So I, I know we're entitled to at least that, but I believe we're entitled to another 2,000 and something on the Marshall House.
2,700 and some change.
Well, yeah.
Yep.
So we can accept this, but then, like I said, send them pictures that the work's been done.
Sounds good.
Request the latter part of it.
Or you can have them come and inspect it.
Yep.
So, does somebody want to make a motion to accept what we have now?
So we'll make a motion to accept the insurance settlement for Primex, claim number PR 20223013214 for water damage due to leak in the roof at the Marshall House in the amount of 5,759.69.
And you want to add the other 2,700 if, in that?
So can I make a recommendation that you don't make the motion at all, until I contact these, the Primex and say, hey, we're fixing it, what do we need to do to get the whole mon, all the money?
So you're saying table this?
Table it, yeah.
Okay. Sound good, Bob? So you want to rescind your motion?
Yeah, I'll rescind it.
It's a really good one, though. Hang on to it for the next meeting. Because I, I think that might be the way to do it, because get what their response is first, and are we going to just take pictures, or are they going to send somebody over?
So then you can, then that's where you don't have to come back and get it taken care of.
Just in case. Just in case we get that letter that says, I'm sorry, but you cashed the first check, so we're not talking to you anymore. Okay, so we'll, we'll discuss more of this in the future. We have an intent to cut.
Move to sign the supplemental intent to cut for Tax Map 5-5-1-6, located on Whittier Street.
Do we have a second on that?
Uh, Bob, it's 5-5-10-6 on my sheet, and I'll second it if you, if you're okay with that.
Somebody's slacking.
I don't know.
Yeah, that must be me.
It's the, the zero button didn't work today. We got to get her a new, get her a new zero button.
Good catch, Charlie.
All right, so that...
My zero button's not working.
Yeah, yeah. All right, any discussion? Roll call vote. Mike, how do you vote? I think you're on mute, Mike. We'll come back to Mike. Bob, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Mike, are you back?
I am, sorry, Matt, aye.
Aye, and I'm an aye, so that's unanimous. Cool, thank you. Next item, looks like the food pantry donation.
I'll make a motion per RSA 31:95 to accept and expend unanticipated funds for the food pantry from an anonymous donor in the amount of $100.
I didn't have that.
Do you want to second it? Seconded by Charlie. Roll call vote. Mike?
Aye.
Uh, Bob?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Matt's an aye, and we thank the anonymous donor.
Yep.
Yep.
So L is an update on the, is that just way of an update, Diane, on the town hall subject?
I just want people to know that we did, I did, we did test the septic system, and it failed, and they, they, we need a new tank and leaching field, that the engineer that we, that you told me I could hire, said it'll be a couple of weeks before he can get here to do any of the design or the test pit.
We've gotten it, have, are we scheduling it to be pumped in the meantime, or is that...
It's already been pumped.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we should be okay for a while.
Yeah.
Cool.
Because the field drains back into the tank when they pump.
Right.
Whatever's in there.
All right, so for other business? Somebody want to do the manifests?
Other business, you want to do it, Charlie, or do you want me?
I'll do it as soon as I find it, because I don't think I've got it in here.
So I'll do the first one, just for fun. Move to sign vendor manifest dated August 2nd, 2022, in the amount of $1,283,847.00, of which $1,225.661 goes towards the August Sanborn Regional School District payment, $636.06 goes towards ARPA office supplies and equipment for the EOC, and $1,800 for monthly cleaning and sanitization of the police station, library, and town hall. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, you got to do the roll call. Mike?
Aye.
Uh, Bob?
Aye.
Charlie? Matt's an aye. That's unanimous. If you want to do the next one?
I don't have it, Mike.
I moved to sign the cable revolving fund dated August 2nd, 2022, in the amount of $7,686.77.
Anybody want a second?
Second.
Seconded by Charlie. Roll call, Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Uh, Charlie?
Aye.
Matt's an aye. That's unanimous.
Move to sign police special detail revolving fund dated August 2nd, 2022, in the amount of $2,949.47.
Aye.
Second.
So I think Mike beat, beat you, so Mike's an aye. Bob?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Matt's an aye. That's unanimous.
Move to sign payroll manifest for pay period July 17th through July 30th, 2022, with the payday of August 4th, 2022. Total payroll is $102,829.27, which includes $575.51 towards the ARPA administrative cost, $31,071.41, and stipends to the police department and highway department employees, which is to come from the ARPA funds.
Seconded by Charlie. Okay, roll call vote. Mike?
Aye.
Aye.
Bob? Charlie?
Aye.
Matt's an aye. Okay, requisitions, I think we've done a couple of these already tonight.
There's two police ones.
Yeah, those are the ones.
Move to sign Police Department requisition number 2022-1, in the amount of $6,215.87 for a Motorola APX 8,000 portable radio and accessories, funds to come from the 2022 Police Department budget equipment line item.
All right, I'll second that.
Seconded by Charlie. Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Aye.
Charlie? Aye. And Matt's an aye.
Move to sign Police Department requisition number 2022-2, in the amount of $6,215.87 for a Motorola APX 8,000 portable radio and accessories, funds to come from the police special detail revolving fund.
Anybody want a second? I'll second that. Mike, you're an aye?
Mike, I'll second it. I'm seconding it.
Okay, Mike's the second. Mike, are you an aye?
I am an aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye. That's unanimous. Uh, I think, so the boat, we've already done, right?
So we move to sign Fire Department requisition number 1049 FD, in the amount of $4,825 for a truck, vault, and installation for the new vehicle.
Second.
Funds to come from the 2022 Fire Department budget line item 4220303.
Charlie's still a second?
I'm still a second.
All right, roll call vote. Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye.
Do you want to call in some minutes?
Anybody want to approve them?
Yeah, approve the minutes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the Selectmen's public hearing minutes dated July 19th, 2022.
As written?
As written.
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Discussion, roll call. Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Aye.
Charlie's an aye. Matt's an aye. That's unanimous.
I make a motion to sign the Selectmen's non-public and public minutes dated July 19th, 2022.
Second.
Discussion. Mike?
Aye.
Uh, Bob?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye.
I make a motion to sign the Selectmen's non-public and public meeting minutes dated July 21st, 2022.
Second.
Roll call. Mike?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Matt's an aye.
I may, I move to, uh, the Selectmen's non-public and public minutes dated July 26th, 2022.
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Roll call. Mike?
Aye.
Uh, Bob?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
And Matt's an aye. That's unanimous.
Review the non-public session minutes for unsealing.
Since there are...
None, so we're...
None, so we're good.
We're good.
Any announcements?
I guess we both said it at the same time.
Uh, I would just throw out there that September 17th is Newton Old Home Day. We're currently looking for vendors for the craft fair. Information on the website, if you're interested, so.
Are we getting that put in the paper, Joe?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's, hopefully see that all out there soon, so. All right.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Anybody want a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, it's non-debatable, as my friend Jim used to say. So thanks, everybody. Uh, next meeting is on the 16th of August, right? So thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you, thank you very much.